Thank you all for coming. Right before we call it your order, if anyone has their cell phone, if you ask to click on the silent, make this private. So you don't have 50 or 60 of them running. I appreciate it. Thank you. I didn't say anything. All called a regular meeting of the City Council. The order, please join me with the friends of the meetings.
Well, finally, we need this video. I believe not sitting so under. We could go out and for which is. I don't think about it. Any of this at all. But they're taking us for a while.
Councilmember Turner.
Eric.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Piler.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tan Morton.
Here.
Mayor Powers.
Here.
How council is here. That was the first time he did the roll call with this intimidating crowd. The names are right here. It's easy, so easy.
Item two is public comment. This is the origin of our agenda where people who have something to say may do so if the item is not on tonight's agenda. And you will have about three minutes worth of an hour of basketball as we turn it over. If there's anyone in the audience who wish to speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Phil Derby. I'm a resident of Portola. And I'm not talking about the agenda item. I'm curious about a couple of months ago, I mentioned that the family resource center had closed. And then we found more information that it opened. And somebody said that they hadn't paid their nonprofit, the people in Quincy, or hadn't registered for nonprofit in 2019. It seems to be closed, but two days a week. I'm curious what's going on with it. If anybody in the city council knows anything about it. And also wondered why the guy who runs it, Scott, got a little F state when he was questioned about it. And there apparently was a $750,000 grant that was given to them. And we've heard nothing at all about what's going on with that. So I just wondered if anybody has any information in the city council.
Thank you.
Hi.
I probably have some information I can share with you later. But not tonight because it's not on the agenda. No, I'll contact you.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Okay, hi. I thank you for the opportunity to present some issues that I've been experiencing with intermountain disposal. I have a prepared statement. I tried to just make this simple line one in three minutes. But if you're needed, please.
I got it.
My name is Mark Schwerer. And I've lived in Portola for the last 17 years since 2006. I'm pending following notes because I felt the details are important to demonstrate the gravity and specific to the issue rather than to just generalize. For those I haven't met, again, I'm Mark Schwerer. I've moved here in June 2006. I've continually had intermountain disposal services unsent. When I first arranged for solid waste disposal services, I was under the assumption that recycling service were obligatory as a city ordinance. Notably, I moved here from Truckee and there was a city ordinance there. Over the past 17 years, I've never had any recycling receptacles provided to me. And I've never engaged in recycling services from the intermountain disposal. Never put anything out for pickup. It's covered recently through a few Facebook posts. And Portola related site that this was not accurate. It wasn't a city ordinance. I confirmed that later with Mr. Kennedy. Coincidentally, in review of the post, I couldn't help noticing that there's several other complaints by people posting in the threads related to intermountain disposal billing practices, including invoices in the rack clear, billing for services that weren't provided, including recycling services. I called on 417. And I talked to Ricky Ross, Mr. Ricky Ross, about the discrepancy in billing. And I shared with him that I don't have any cards. And I, even if I wanted to use the service, he replied, well, some people wanted recycling cards and some didn't, which I took to imply that you didn't need a card to put recycling out for collection. It then drew my attention to a clause at the bottom of the invoice that states goals are deemed correct unless disputed within 60 days of receipts. And indicated that they would refund me for 60 days of services that weren't provided, but that was it. I find this peculiar because I'm presently being billed on a quarterly cycle, which leads me to incur 30 days of, you know, of the cost that I paid for, even if I was agreeable to that. Even when they acknowledged that they made errors. When I protested that fact, Mr. Ross simply said, well, you can take that up with the city if you want. During the same conversation, I notified Mr. Ross that I had received a bill for an inconsistent amount and wanted an explanation. Just to understand what I'm paying for. He wasn't able to provide any kind of consistent or any kind of a clear answer that I understood. I followed up with the email the following day asking for a full refund of the charge as a written explanation of billing inconsistency and a written acknowledgement that I don't have and never had any or any cards in my possession. I received a response eight days later from Candace Ross, basically rescuing my responsibility notifying them for billing errors and that they're only liable for four to two months of overpayment. Touching that Candace, again, I don't understand why that if I paid in good faith that they can't go back. They didn't incur any expense other than billing me. They didn't pick anything up. No cards have been provided. But she did offer a refund for four months. After reviewing these 17 years of receipts, the amount or invoices, the amounts billed, over billed charges are only $460. So to make a long story short, I waited another week, followed up with them again with a phone call, with an email, no response. I finally, yesterday, called them back and said, hey, you know, I've been waiting. I sent you guys the follow up email and I'm, you know, wondering what's going on. I need a written explanation so I can pay this bill. I want acknowledgement that I don't have a card. And I want a refund of my money. I provided them a spreadsheet in the earlier email detailing these 17 years of charges. And I talked to Mr. Ross at the point he became agitated and said, you didn't agree with Candace's response. And that I did indeed have a I M D supply recycling waste card in my possession. That would be, that came with a charge of what he said. It came at a cost, actually. And said I'd be charged if I didn't return the card. So needless to say, this is becoming a crisis situation. It's a very serious issue now that, you know, I'm clear on what the credit and patients are for the outstanding bill that I, you know, I'm not willing to pay until I get an explanation, which I think is very reasonable. And now, you know, I'm being charged for stuff that I don't even have in my possession. So I'm gathering letters from people that live on my street. You know, including people that I've asked to pick up trash and take my trash out when I was on vacation. People that live next door to me that have never seen a recycling cart go out, as well as people in the community that know my recycling patterns that I've gone to Dawes for several years, many, many years. And know that I recycle religiously. But the allegations that I do have a card and I'm going to be charged for it, as well as Mr. Ross's comment that he's got an employee, I am the employee that lives across the street from me, which I presume is his son, who owns a house on the street. Coincidentally, just a few doors down across the street, appear to be a threat and may constitute, you know, fabrication of records if they're saying that I have a card when I don't have a card, when I never did, and that's what I'm trying to explain to them. So in summary, it's just, I'm sort of at this point appalled that what should have been a simple request for a refund that I feel like I'm really entitled to should have been handled in a simple transaction just between I M D and me. They should have agreed to that. I don't think providing an explanation is unreasonable. I don't think providing a letter that I don't have cards in their possession is unreasonable. And now it's turned into an issue where I'm, I'm, I'm really investigating going to a small claims court action and gathering information from people that have been posting on Facebook to demonstrate a pattern when I get to court. And so I would ask the city council to, you know, intervene on my behalf if they're able to, but certainly consider investigating their billing practices and consider terminating the city's contract if they continue with this current behavior.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Heidi Hart. And just real quick, I just thought tonight was a, would be a great opportunity to help Rainbow access to the meetings. Maybe you can reconsider your decision and allow it during extreme weather.
Anyone else? The city's seen no other hands. One of the city communications. To the town for the state of the council, community committees and community reports. Let's start with Mr. Parker.
I have nothing.
Ms. Turner.
I have nothing.
I attended the media network, the Federal River Rail Society. And they announced at that event that they had received $1 million grant that they're going to proceed in doing a reception center, another building, a lot paving lot. And it sounds like really exciting things. On top of that, they got another $375,000 grant. And they're using it to include a lot of improvements around the museum. So I encourage everybody here to hit their relatives to come and start reattending the Federal River Museum. They're doing some good things.
Thank you. Good morning. Your mind? Yes, I attended the Beckford Fire Department meeting, the regular meeting, and also attended the meeting at the railroad museum and the community meeting at CRC regarding the threat. That is taken. Thank you. I attended the transportation and community meeting, the S TAC committee meeting, which is the more S secondary means for people riding in public transit and new routes and new information on changes in routes, where we're going, how we're getting there, who are going to take up or getting diversions off of the routes in order to get individuals out and that's a good stuff down there. I attended the S TAC meeting, which is the Tri-County's Action Agency in Susanville. And we allocated a whole bunch of money to various groups who are mainly in business to help our communities, either through food programs, housing, senior citizens, all sorts of different programs. I'm ready to spend a dollar or two a lot through that agency. I attended my meaningful mountain pop of meeting over on the coast in Fort Bragg. Had an informal meeting with Julie Hunter of our air district. And we talked a lot about the best methods to get rid of all our pain and all of our hazardous things, which was present there as well. And mastication in the fuel boats down on the ground where they won't cause any forching of trees. I think there are a lot of the other stories taken care of. At least like the best way to do all we need is a whole lot of money as usual. Thanks again to law enforcement for their quick act through the schools. It was impressive. And they handled it, I can, in no way is very extremely well. And then I wanted to shout out to our finance officer, Susan Scarlett, who had a hip replacement Monday. And I understand is doing well. But she was in serious pain and it didn't slow her down a bit. She was going straight ahead. And that's all I have. Staff communications. We don't have anyone from the fire department tonight.
I don't believe anyone from fire, sir.
Anyone from the terrorists that already just wanted to leave me for.
I'm here.
Okay.
I don't have any stats for you guys tonight. Things have been going kind of crazy with the special staff. Things are getting better. We, for a while there, they had taken a lot of our patrol staff and put them in the jail or getting some of our C O's to quit, return, so that's alleviating the pressure on patrol to go in there. So things are getting, so for sure, they're getting better. So just keep your fingers crossed and hopefully things on the support or just to the right of your side again. The hit brackets we got.
I'll do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Air quality report.
Yeah. I'm gonna just stand here.
Sure. Okay.
Whatever you need.
Thank you for the air quality, metal army. But yeah, a couple of quick things because I think a few meetings have been canceled and I missed a few for work. But the wood stove event was April 20th. That was really successful. It was our largest turnout yet. We ran out of food and coffee by 11:30. Last year I was dumping it over the porch at the medicine hall. So it's been successful. We had guests from Walla Walla, Washington, the vice president of Blaze King Wood Stoves. We have representatives from Grass Valley with Travis Industries, if you're low, high, or places to come near. They offered a ton of useful information. Gave away about five different gifts, equivalent to like $500 with base hardware gift cards. So congratulations if there's anyone here that won them, I think so. But yeah, that was the event. So thanks for attending. And green waste, that was delayed, as you all know. It did get started last weekend on the 20th. It's going through the 20th. That is free for city residents to take as many dump loads as you want to bring your ID and maybe even a utility bill to prove that you are a resident of the city. The reason we do this for city residents is because of the city ordinance that does not allow open burning within city limits. So just to alleviate the cost of cleaning up through yard every year. Didn't eat dinner yet. A little hungry. Some shit. Then for tailor period ended, that ended April 30th. So the no wood burning and non-epic certified stove. It's a pretty long period of time, seven months, but it's over as of April 30th. We had approximately 25% of this group service hall as a curtailment day. So if you're interested about that, it's on the website. We have forecasters that we partner with out of Sonoma County. They use our air monitor and the atmospheric information to decide whether or not the inversions in atmospheric conditions are creating bad weather conditions for wood burning, which would just indicate that burning wood stove a little bit later in the day. So the smokes are settling in our breeding zones so heavily. That's all I really have. I did put our interim A T C over business parts over there. If anyone has any questions, use the lead department from the air quality district. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Item C, city manager report.
That's me.
Thank you.
All right. Everything is just running smoothly, not much going on. All the potholes are actually repaired. If you see any at your imagination, the sewer and water infrastructure is in perfect shape. There's nothing wrong with it. And there's really not much to do anymore around the city.
Students are starting off and they don't know how to do.
And oh wait, that's wrong, wrong notes. We have so far, since the storm has subsided, we've only had 21 water leaks, which is a record for the history of Portola. So we're constantly fixing those. And those are 100% due to the reason that, because we had to shut down the water for the entire city and then recharge. And we were expecting problems. It's not as bad as we were expecting, but it's not good either. So we're constantly working on water leaks. The bike race update, that's June, the first weekend of June. There are 820 racers registered. They have an estimate of 943, about $10,000, just over $10,000 in camp revenue created. So they're probably about 50%. They figure about 50% more than they had last year for the gravel grinder race. The pool should be open just after school gets out. We're trying to gear up and get people certified and get things together for the pool. Kelly has been working hard in public works, trying to make sure everything's back together. If there's anything special that Kelly would want to report on the pool, she can. But I doubt that she wants to. A little note from the county, since we're on county business tonight. There's going to be a workshop. It's, there's some, they call it CARES Act funding. It's COVID money that's in the form of loans, I think up to $50,000 a piece for businesses locally. There're going to be some workshops around the county. And the one in Portola is going to be May 30th. This is a flyer. There are some up there. If we don't have enough, if you actually want to take one to see what these workshops are, let us know. We'll copy off a few more before you leave. So.
Consent items, consent agenda before. These items are expected to be non-controversial. The city council will act upon them at one time without inspection. Many council members, staff member, or interested party will request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Additional budget appropriation will require a board this roll call vote. So any, anyone have anything to pick off? See, nobody. Or in the public. I'll make a motion that we approve adopt, adopt Revolution Number 0.546, authorizing payments. And that we approve the admittance from April 26 and June 17.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Motion and a second. Roll call please.
Who had the second? Who had the second? Was that Rochambeau or what do you want to do? It was both.
Me, me, mighty bow.
And did you? There'll be bonus points at the end of the year for the second, so. Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah.
Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tan Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes. Thank you. Inside, Hat Creek Temporary Asphalt Bad Planet. This is going on both temporary asphalt bad planet in the Delta. You see the comments and submit the Columbus County planning department before doing the trail. What we have here is we are not the journalist fiction where this proposed land is located. And we, comments that we receive tonight, you can take those, those are either informal comments, it's just an informal set of the comment that you have and go to directly to the planning department at the code. And we have the address written in them.
There's a flyer over there. Those of you that don't already know, many of you do because I've seen the activity. There's a flyer there with the specific notification the county put out with instructions on how to submit your official comment on this project. And it's up there. Run out, let me know. But that will have the specific instruction to make your comment official with the county.
Yeah. And then the comment period for this item with town is June 10. And that's the end of the comment period. And then the state will award the contract to the higher highway project from, it goes from Cronberg out to the Grisley Creek Bridge. So it's a huge, huge challenge project. And that will be awarded on June 16. So that's all we noticed starting the session. So anyone wishing to comment on that item tonight? We want to hear your voices. And give you a chance to have a voice in this because what we didn't want to do was have people think that we ignore our public. Number one. And number two, it helps if you listen carefully to other people who may have either various views from your own or have exactly the same view as you. And that's, that's the whole idea of public, public discourse. And hopefully it's what we do in a democracy, you know?
And I do want to point out that, like, we weren't expecting this, but Perry Thompson from Hat Creek didn't make it here in the event that there are some actual questions regarding some unanswered questions or concerns. He might be able to answer some of the questions for you that may be up in the air.
Okay, thank you. Yes, questions? Did you raise your hand? Yes, ma'am. Please stand.
I'm just ready for the volley. And I want to thank the city council three years ago for helping us with Perry when he was threatening my house and my county. I appreciate your help. And I want to know what your stand is on it now because I saw how he was going to ruin our area. And I wouldn't have had wealth, a bunch of us would have a well and we would have been dead. So are you behind Ellicott Lee like you were with us?
Yeah, that's probably like an original. Just sort of diamond, yeah. Most people, most people will be under that. We'll just take the temperature.
Well, yes or no?
We will be giving an answer here. We are here to collect your opinions and your viewpoints. Yeah, we each have our own, by the way. Yes.
I'm in Allen and I live at Ellicott Park. And we're right across the river from where that's going to be. And I'm very concerned about air quality, about property values going down. Neighbor wanted to stop, put his house up for sale and now he's really nervous. And it should be because who's going to buy a house with an asphalt plant next door? So I have a lot of questions and I know this isn't the time to, you can't answer them, but I didn't have any idea how to approach the county. So this information was very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Joe Futo. I live off of Iron Horse, Jack Creek Road, literally right across the river. The river of plants going to be placed. City of Portola's done a great job cleaning up the air, getting more people to come to the area for events as far as the gravel grinder and all the other stuff that the lost here, which is now Bound Sierra. And this is about to offer, which is great for everybody. So I'm hoping that the city will step in and kind of gently tell the county how you guys feel as far as being against it.
Next, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Heidi Hart. And I live in the Portola area and I'm actively organizing against the asphalt plan. I don't want to disrupt the meeting, but I do have flyers that have the address of who to contact right now. I have a lot of questions right now. The decision is in the hands of Tracy Ferguson, who is our county planner, chief acting of the Zoming Avenue for the CECL permit, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. So she has the first say and hopefully she will protect our region. If she doesn't, we have a right to appeal. But she does have created California, so have a right to appeal at that stage without support of supervisors. It may eventually go to a legal fight, hopefully not. But at this point, it's really good that everyone's here. What I'm urging the council to do is to actively join us in opposition of this plan and to draft a formal opposition to the plan. And I think you all know how to do that. So I hope that you will. And I think all of us here hope that you will. And I know you don't have jurisdiction, but you have a formal formal opposition would go a long way with this equal permit and this process. So we hope that you do that. And I do have flyers. I don't want to disrupt the meeting, but feel free to approach me afterwards. And the deadline to comment is June 10. So you've got in mind, I also wrote a letter to the editor. So the information is on Columbus News under the letters to the editor, which is the Ferguson's email address. So thank you.
Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Nero. I'm a nurse health policy specialist. And as mentioned last week, I have concerns about the health of the population. I realize that the county is the one that will make the decision. I realize that the county is the one that will make the decision. Um however, Portola will be significantly impacted by. The plant that goes in in the Delaware region. So I just would like to ask that Portola City Council and leaders. Think about the um the effects to the air quality. That will impact Portola, the noise pollution that will. Uh the traffic, the enormous change in our traffic patterns, which is gonna put. All of us at risk of safety, you know, the traffic accidents with these hundred and fifty trucks per day. Uh they won't just be in the Delaware region, they're gonna traverse through Portola. Imagine through our little town, a hundred and fifty or more trucks. Per day for three years. That's pretty concerning and that will impact our traffic patterns, um our sheriff's department, our highway patrol um. So in addition to the health and um the exposures to the lime dust. The asphalt pews, the potential for contaminating the water in the river. Um so all of those health concerns, but we also have safety concerns as well that will impact Portola. So I'd like to urge everyone. That lives, works in Portola. To oppose this project. There have been several suggestions for alternative locations. For this land that are away from. Portola where people live, work and breathe. So thank you very much for considering this major decision.
Yes, sir. In the back. The yes, ma'am, sorry.
Any broader? I live across the river from the potential site. I live on Cracker Jack Creek Road. Um my husband and I purchased property and moved out there about seven years ago. And we have spent the last seven years improving that property and. Getting ready for our retirement. We're getting near that age and. Unfortunately, I was born with. Compromised loans, so I have major concerns with the uh particles, the chemicals that's gonna be in the air um. The dust and hundreds, like she said, a hundred and fifty drops a day. You can only water a road so much. You're gonna have the dust, you're gonna have the chemicals in that location along the river. I think I'm having a real time, hard time being convinced that there's not going to be any. Implications of. You know hazards going into our river and and thus going down the canyon and and affecting a whole lot more people besides just us here in Portola. So that's that's my concern. I'm definitely against it.
Yes, sir. Standing.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Rick Williams and just to set it up a little bit, my wife and I in two thousand and ten. Bought our first um second home in Portola. And I'll never forget that was the first year you probably both started having the bonfire in the middle of uh the street and. I remember looking at my wife and saying, and you found Mayberry. And uh I would hate if you ever lose Mayberry. Um this council over the years, I know there's been criticism, you're seen criticism for it, you know, you're not progressive enough, you're not building enough. But you've done a great job of actually keeping this the kind of community that people want to live in and want to come to. And and I appreciate that. Uh I think that this this, there are so many red flags on this project and I know you you can do only, all you can do is state your opinion. So before I get too digress too much, I would just say what my request is. That if necessary, you bring this back as an action item instead of a discussion item. If the council is willing to look at doing and taking a formal position on this and making recommendation. That would be, right now you really can't do it except sort of. At Hockley, shall we say. And so, but if you were to actually bring up, bring it back and then if there is gonna be a decision made before you can do that. Then I would ask that you submit a letter to the county asking them to postpone a decision. Until the only and largest incorporated city in the county have a chance to do that. I think that we have a right to ask that. Um I will say that we have in the years since two thousand and ten. We have bought multiple rentals. Matter of fact, one of my tenants is here tonight. Multiple rentals in this area and around this area and even in Gray Eagle. So we have a number of people. Who are affected, most of them are senior citizens. And I will say that I have served on the citizens' vider committee for one of the largest air districts in. But in California for the last fifteen years and that's the San Joaquin Valleys uh air pollution control district. And I can tell you whatever the whatever you end up with in their PM two point five. Or the PM tens or the PM micros, whatever's going in. And then you're gonna have all of the other blue factors going in. Your your fledgling air district here is gonna want to offset that. And mitigate that. And the only way they're gonna be able to mitigate it is to find some way. To have the rest of the citizens are gonna have to give stuff up to make that work. That's something to be thinking of. Down the road. So those are my requests and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I just. Me?
Yes.
I just wanted a quick shout out for the children and for the lights that will be on um. Through the evening and the night and the night sky and their ability to experience the stars and all of those things. Uh the kids don't really have a voice and really they will be impacted immensely by this project.
Yes, ma'am.
Me, of course. Okay, uh Cindy Wood. I've been a resident of the Portola. For the last twenty-three years. And um we have had commercial property. Um in Delacre and along the Delacre and along. Uh highway seventy corridor. And um we live out on eight fifteen across from Timber Lane. And um we've enjoyed the exact site since we moved here. Um we've taken our dogs down there and 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 uh. Swimming them, um enjoying the water, um looking at all the wildlife. There's bear and. Ducks and you know, a whole plethora of flora and fauna to be enjoyed there. Um so it is our opinion, um of my husband and I brought. Uh that the asphalt would be a major, the asphalt plant would be a major infringement to the wildlife waterfall. Reading season, the environment, the residential areas of Iron Horse. With loans above the embankments of the river at the site to the south. Timber Lane up to eight fifteen and South Portola, which is to the east. Delacre to the north and maybe Westbury. Life to our co- community would be greatly impacted by the daily operations. There's historical proof of surveys done showing the reduction of property values by up to fifty-six percent. Located near asphalt plants. The increased amount of traffic with so severely impact. The Delacre Road and surrounding roads with safety hazards. In an intersection racked with serious safety hazards and accidents regularly. The road needs serious work on the southern portion of the access leading to the site across railroad tracks. We both feel that. We we can't fathom that the railroad is okay with over a hundred and fifty trucks per day impacting our tracks. Let alone the road being able to handle that kind of hard usage. How about the businesses that operate all along that Delacre um road? What remedies and cleanup will be done during and after the plant operations? What remedy to the intersection of Delacre and Highway Seventy will be done during and after plant operations? For safety and traffic flow, roundabout secondary access to Bella between Portola and Delacre on the old county road. The Grizzly Lake CSD will be greatly impacted by the increased demands and use of water by the asphalt plant. Historically, GLCSD has strictly guarded and rationed water use of their aging system and. Has issues with the water quality. What remedies or improvements will be done to the water system to keep it running? Air quality to the city of Portola and surrounding areas has been designated. Um by the US EPA to be hazardous. Um with dust. And particles, particulates increasing from the asphalt plant and increased diesel truck traffic. It will exacerbate the existing. Uh issue of compliance with the community that has tried to rectify programs to reduce particulates. Through the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management. Will monitoring devices or schedules be implemented to regulate non-compliance of high levels of particulate matter? The Feather River is designated National Wild and Scenic River along its resources. It's under jurisdiction of the. Plumas National Forest. Water quality is of utmost importance for the local and downriver communities. The proposed plant will directly affect the turbidity of the river. With the air particulates it creates in addition to the chemicals, it will leach into the soil, air and water of the Feather River. Has an in-depth study uh been done. I've only seen a cursory um study. And will there be monitoring devices or schedules implemented to assure the water stays safe? We agree that the planned work needs to be done. However, we feel strongly that an alternative need. Alternative site needs to be found or remedies to so the substantial list of concerns voiced by our community. What contribution is Hat Creek Construction making towards the betterment of our community?
Thank you.
Um Mike Wizenbury, um I got some questions for the Hat Creek guy. Very. Thanks for pointing out.
Mike, I think. What the council probably wants to do. And I'm kind of recording some of the hot buttons. There's gonna be questions for him. So um and and then after the comments are done, he might want to address some of the air quality railroad stuff probably guessing that might.
I want to know about the hundred and fifty trucks. Is there gonna be a hundred and fifty trucks coming?
So that was one. And he may, he may have to call on you. For some clarification when he answers, so.
Okay.
Yeah, let's give him a voice after we give the whole body here all the questions and then we'll. Readdress some of them directly to. Uh yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Ron Camico. I'm a locomotive engineer. I worked on the railroad since nineteen ninety-six. I currently work for Amtrak. I run California Zepper train back and forth across the valley. If you all have a locomotive tech ride with us, it'd be nice to see you. And uh I'd never really bought a house before in my life. I'm sixty-three. Two years ago, I bought a house here in Portola. And one of the big reasons that I wanted to move up here to Plumas County is the Wild and Scenic River. Fished it, kayaked it, was about to canoe it the other day, but ran out of time. Uh it's in a beautiful stage for actually canoeing through the little canyon. Sorry, I bought my phone on first hour and after the ward, I have to keep it on in case the railroad calls me. Um. I've been a river rat my whole life and coming to Plumas County. And then learning just the other day that there's talk of putting an asphalt plant for three years. Along the banks of the Wild and Scenic Feather River, the Middle Fork. And y'all may not know this, but I believe it was nineteen seventy or seventy-one when the Wild and Scenic River program was first initiated. It was only nine segment of river anywhere in the country. And this little piece of river, the Middle Fork of the Feather, was inducted into the Wild and Scenic Rivers Program. So. Based on that, I find it sort of incredulous that an asphalt plant would be located in such a delicate area. Especially surrounded by population when Plumas County is so remote, there could be potentially, as somebody mentioned earlier. Lots and lots of different locations where we could put such an asphalt plant to repair highway sending. It doesn't seem to make a whole hell of a lot of sense to me to put it right there. I would urge the council to take a formal position against it.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn already spoken. In the far, far back.
There's a microphone.
Hi, I'm Jenny Contoni. I live in uh Portola and. Um you know, I can't really, you know, everyone's had such great comments. I don't know that I can say anything new and different other than. You know, it's just been amazing that we would even consider the asphalt plant on a wild and scenic river. Given that it's in a hundred-year flood plain. And all the other environmental reasons and traffic reasons. Quality of life reasons. But I'm taking time here tonight, as we all are, to voice our. Uh support for the council to take a strong position against asphalt. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, um I'm Phil Derby again, now a Portola resident. Just to let you know, for twenty years I was a salesman. In the Bay Area. I sold industrial tooling and I sold steel. And we sold to an asphalt. Plant plant in San Francisco. It was in the middle of San Francisco. And we sold a rapid resistance steel for the mill and they also sold tooling. There is going to be a lot of maintenance in this plant. And just be aware, you're gonna have not only the plant, but a machine shop. To maintain it. And drilling and metals and a lot of work going in with a whole maintenance crew. Just to run this on a day-to-day basis. Plus all the traffic going into the plant to bring. Um tools, steel and other products. To the plant, let alone bringing the asphalt out. So I just want to make you aware of that because I've had experience with asphalt plants. Some cases are good, some cases are bad, but they were in the middle of San Francisco. Or Oakland or some industrial area. It wasn't up here in mountains. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to do a quick reminder that there are business cards for the interim air pollution control officer. I don't know how familiar you guys are with brand, but I am employed specifically to address the residential wood smoke program. So I don't like to think I'm putting here silently. But I'm addressing the PM two point five that comes. Substantially from residential wood smoke in the area. However, my interim APCO is fantastic. Her name is Julie Hunter. She knows I'm here tonight and I brought her cards and she will be ready to answer any questions. At this time, I don't believe any permit has been submitted to us. We're just. In the know as much as you all are.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm Valerie Seisen. I've lived here for forty-five years. And I gave this broken floor. I'd like to stop what's going on. I concur with all the things people have said against asphalt plan and lime kiln plan. And I think the board of supervisors has a wrong idea of what Plumas County needs and wants to make again. I think what you're doing with the gravel grinder is one awesome thing. Tourism is the answer for Plumas County. I think if you bring people in here to enjoy it, not to desecrate it. And I urge you to. Come together and have an opinion against it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Patty Patterson. I live in Delacre. And I was talking um with one of the businesses over in the area where the plant is. And I have no information to to verify this, but I heard that they were gonna use water from the Delacre Pond. Which is horrifying because. Of all the wildlife that is in that pond and it comes from a creek where there's. Beavers and otters. All kinds of animals. I can't believe that they would even consider draining or losing water from that pond. So I just want to bring that up too.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Thank you. So my name is Pat Diller. I'm the general manager of the Grizzly Lake CSD and I. Know that there is a lot of rumors going around instead of facts. So I would really like people to come in and get the true facts of what's going on. We have signed no contract. With the Caltrans or Hat Creek. We are just the potential. Water source that they were looking into. To pull water from the pond. We haven't signed anything and so we're not gonna deal with it. Why do people think that we're gonna do this? Without asking you to get the facts from us?
Well, maybe you should put the facts out and. I did say that I heard.
This is an individual public comment. Out of back and forth right now.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So going back to Caltrans. Back in October of two thousand and twenty-two, I received an email from Caltrans regarding the Cronberg Rehabilitation Project. They were seeking a potential source of non-potable water to help control the dust while paving. They requested to be on the agenda for the January meeting. During the discussion at the meeting, the directors thought it might be a good source of revenue for the district. However. It came to my attention on Monday that there was an asphalt plant that was gonna be put in and all the trucks. Coming around into dust and chemicals. So um I got back with Caltrans a couple of days ago. And I wanted them to, you know, get back to me about. Them working with Hat Creek. But they said they weren't because it comes to the bidding and then at certain point in the middle, whoever gets. But they said they weren't because it comes to the bidding and then at certain time the mill, whoever gets chosen will for the bids. But you don't have to do this. We are just a potential. Like they're trying to get water from the Feather River. They can get water from Ray Davis. They can get water from anywhere. If someone was to say, yes, we'll do a contract with you. But they just let us and said, well, this is just for dust control. But then I find out that it's a bigger project than what I was told. So, uh, it's going back to the board of directors again. They, uh, the chairman was upset that this was not brought to our attention during the meeting. And I would think that the water is going to be able to go to them. So if anybody else has any questions, please come and ask and we'll give you the facts. But we don't want to ruin our Feather River or our ponds, you know, and all the wildlife. You know, we love the Feather River and we want to keep it the way it is. Do you have anything to say, Dan?
I was gonna say, can't believe. This lady because. They just said they fixed the hole in front of my mom's house. All they did was pour asphalt on her. So.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, um, I'd actually like to say that I agree with the majority of the public here tonight. I think that putting a temporary asphalt plan will cause permanent damage to the ecosystem. And to the. The locals surrounding it and that includes us because we are in the sphere of influence. Um, I am concerned about people's health issues and many of them have asthma and. Other things that are concerning as well. So I do want to ask you that you guys do stand with the public. And make an official statement.
Carolyn, you spoke once. It's kind of been a one-on-one, a one-on-one, a one-on-one.
I just have a question.
Uh, if you have a question, ask it.
Would it be possible to, um, I know we have time constraints before the decision. But would it be possible to invite the owners, managers of Hat Creek to come and take questions from the public? When will that be?
Four, four, three. Yes, sir.
Yeah, hey, my name is Mike Grease. I own Sierra Road on Delaware Road. Um, had a business here for twenty-four years. Um, it made it through O eight, made it through COVID. Um, Hat Creek comes in. Um, I don't think anybody understands the traffic that's already on the road. Um, I kind of knew that I've been there for four years. It is a madhouse. If you put twenty-five trucks in that road, it's going to be trouble. Um, my customer is now backing out of my business. I'm nervous for them. Um, I asked my technicians when they hit seventy and they're going to west doors, Quincy, don't go that way. You've got to go east because you're going to get killed. And I don't think if you experienced that, you need to go out there and check it out. Because it is a dangerous location. Only thing I hate about that place is getting on seventy. Um, it was nervous for me, my customers, uh, my employees, uh, Bob Price has probably thirteen employees. Uh, C M companies, I don't know how many dicks he has. He's here tonight if I tell you. Um, it is a madhouse and everybody's out there trying to make a living. I understand it, but we get more, we're going to be in trouble. Um, I just don't think it's a great decision. I'm pretty disappointed with our supervisors that it even came this far and we have to be here. It makes no sense at all. And, uh, I just wish you guys would help us with this. I hate when people say, I'm, I'm from Portola. Um, when people ask me where my shop is, I say Portola. I don't say Delaware. Yes, this is Portola. So I appreciate you guys having a meeting. I don't know, the trees on the market street, amazing. But we need your help and I really appreciate the meeting. Anything you missed to do. Um, I think this is going to crush my business if this come through and I'm kind of preparing for that. I'm not ready to retire. I think the town needs a cat shop. It's been fun. You've got great customers.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hannah Bright. I'm the homeowner on Iron Horse Drive. Um, I was raised and grew up in Plumas and Sierra counties and I, I left the area to pursue my higher education and. Lived in many places all around the country, traveled all around the world.
Small town saying shit like that. Whoa. A little out of the paper. That's my father. She just pulled and she was hiring.
No, she just said, I'm ready to go hiring. It was, it was so. We have twenty-something years of. You know, we have contributed to our community now. Down everybody.
We gotta keep the peace, okay? So, say, say, raise everyone. That's what we're here for. Say everybody's opinions, but. We're off first.
Uh, please, please.
I'm, I still, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to say I'm very proud to be part of this community. I've traveled all around the world, lived a lot of places, decided to come back here to build my home. On Iron Horse Drive, right where this asphalt mine is going to go. And I'm very concerned about the pollution and the wildlife impacts. And everything that everyone has brought up, but most importantly, I think it reflects fully on our values as a community. And I want to continue to be proud to live in this community. And so, um, I would like to also formally ask and urge. City Council to take a formal opposition this month. Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't know if you guys realize where this plant is going, but there's a rail yard. There's a septic plant. There's a cement yard there and there's the dump. I can't think of a better place to put it around here. I'm sorry, but that is just industry. The one thing that concerns me is like Mike said, is that intersection. That is dangerous. That whole intersection is just dangerous. That's my main concern. But that's, I'm sorry, but that's a great spot for it. You gave your opinion. I gave mine.
Thank you.
You're on my guitar, Pat. Oh, anyway, my name is Patrick. I've been here almost seventy years. Living in this community, fire department, everything else. Anyway, I know you're, I'm going to be probably the minor one here, but I'll agree with that gentleman there. Uh, it might not be the best location, but if from other locations in the area, it is the best location. Just let me speak my speaker, okay? People speak my end. There, like you said, there was a, there's a, um, cement plant there. There is a garbage plant there, the auto repair shops there. Sixty years ago, the mill in Delaware dumped oil and garbage where that location is. It hasn't hurt the river. I realize it's not there, but that doesn't mean they're going to do that. In the truck, whether you put it anywhere, the trucks are going to be there. I realize that there, you know, nobody wants to mention their house. I don't want to next to my house. But either that or you tear the damn road out and make it, uh, gravel. Because it's got to get you paid somewhere along the line. And it's, I don't know how long the project is. I, I've heard rumors. Um, it, but it's temporary. It's not permanent. And the pollution is there. Already and under state guidelines, I'm sure they're not going to pollute. And dump oil in the river or whatever they think. Uh, you've got trains going up and down that track. They're carrying a lot more hazardous material than what's happening. At that plant. Uh, from what I, and there's a rumor too. I understand it's propane fire, right? Propane fire. So basically all you need oil into the mixture that you put on the pavement. And there's roads every place in this town that have asphalt on it. And if you don't put the plants closer to here, the traffic from Reno or Stevensville, I don't know where you're going to get it. Getting that going through town, it looks like right here, you know, they're going to go from Portola to Grizzly Road. The rest of the projects down the, to there. I mean, I, I, I realize people on their houses and I, I understand that. But, I mean, what, what do you do? Nobody wants it in the backyard. Uh, you know. It, it, and policy wise, look, look how much it's going to be cheaper. To have it in this area than to bring it from somewhere else. Plus that hopefully some of these truck drivers or some of these people are staying here will stay in motels, eat at the restaurants, eat some here. Uh, you, you know, it's, it's a short period of time really for our lives. And that's my statement on it and I realize I'm from a minority, but that's, that's how I feel about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, uh, my name is Yvonne. I live in Delaware and sorry, I understand your argument. Um, I was looking into pros and cons because I was trying to look at this from both sides. And while I think you bring up very good points, I would also like to say that the answer to pollution is not more pollution. It never is. And in addition to that, something you're not considering is, um, the asphalt fumes. They do, they're just consequences. There's health consequences. There are serious health consequences. I looked it up. It went from nausea, vomiting, skin irritation, breathing problems. And that's for healthy people. I have asthma.
My son has asthma. I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I mean, we're going to stop that.
Right.
You know.
I, I just want to point out, you know, when you look at the times that this plant is going to be operating as well. I won't be able to open a window from six A M. to six P M. And that is if they don't operate at night because it says right here. That their discretion may lie. So that's also an issue for me. I just wanted to point it out.
Do you have any questions before we go on to page two? Yes, sir.
Um, my name is Bradley. I'm a resident of Delaware for twenty-five years. I wasn't going to say anything. Uh, because I agree with everybody here except, uh, in response to these two gentlemen here. The big difference is, is that. Uh, intermountain disposal, the, uh, the crap ponds, the, uh. The stuff that's been out there has been out there for twenty-five years and it's been handling it just fine. And now we're going to put, might be concerned with the infrastructure, it's the roads, it's the water. Uh, we're going to put basically three times the, uh, the traffic on that, that road and three times this train on Delaware right there. Um, and there's going to be, um, unintended consequences and, um. Yeah, that's, like I said, I wasn't going to say anything, but now I feel urged.
Your urge, that's good. Yes, ma'am.
Um, my name is Antoinette and I've been a resident for twenty-nine years. Um, and I, I came just to listen because I wanted information, um, and not the information you might not pay for. And, uh, I think regardless of if it goes forward or if it's stopped. If, if this project moves forward, I'd like to see more safety precautions put in place. Um, there are no guard crossings on that railroad, those railroad tracks. So if there are trucks crossing it. I'd like to see arms, you know, the guards to be able to come down. Um, I don't know who put that expense, whether that's the railroad, the county or Hat Creek. Um, but I think that the biggest potential for hazardous leakage is if a train hits anything. Because what the train carries is far more dangerous and more hazardous than asphalt. Um, so I think that has to be mitigated. Also, if this goes forward, um, something on the highway, whether it's a yellow flashing light, whether it's. Signs saying trucks entering the highway. Um, I think I just want to put that out there at this time that. Whatever happens, I think a lot of other safety things need to be considered as well.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Bill Reed and, uh, I'm in construction and I live and work on Delaware. I write down the road, um, Mike. And although I understand the need for resources and materials. Um, other than the obvious of building something on the shores of the Wild and Scenic River, which the banks of it is completely illogical. We experienced a major accident at that intersection. You may recall maybe a year ago when a young woman got wiped out big time. What it is, and this is really important because they're talking about ten hours, hundred fifty trucks, round trip. If you do the math, I think that's a truck in two minutes. Am I right? Going up and down, up and down. And when you come out of Delaware Road and you want to go west. That's what happened to this woman. Look to the right, you can't see it. And when those ladies are coming. You're not going to have time to stop. And so there's going to, if this happens, I don't think it should. They need to completely redesign, pay for a complete new intersection there and I don't know, signals are required. Or whatever, but we watched a couple accidents there. That one, we happened to be standing right there and it was horrific. And, and everybody knows, lives in this community, that intersection. And every single Portola resident, I bet you travels, one time or another goes up and down the intersection. So. Um, I know we need this asphalt. We need the road repaired, but gosh, isn't there somewhere else? And by the way, that wind blows right into your, into our, into Portola. Maybe in the summertime when they're operating the plant. That's why the railroad's got all their windmills up and everything. So it's just going to pump it right down into the town. So although it's not in our exact jurisdiction to make the decisions. This city is going to feel all the repercussions of it. That's all I want to say.
Okay, I see you on my hands for part one. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Shannon Rice. I've lived here. Twenty-seven years. We've had a business. Twenty years. We've been part of the community. We're on Delaware Road. Um, we have a lot of concerns. We understand that. I just believe that there could be a better placement. I understand you say it's industry and it's industrial, but it's not that type of industrial. It'll have to be somewhere different. You can put this, that's more removed from the communities and neighborhoods. People are going to be subjected to health hazards. And there are communities that are so close to Delaware and prevailing winds do go from west to east. So anything that the plant emits will come into Portola. And I think it's just going to hurt our community. It's going to hurt it health-wise, economically. My husband was here and he was telling his piece. We're going to be impacted. We've been providing services to the community for a very long time, twenty-something years. And with that traffic, we're not going to be able to function anymore. We're not, people aren't going to be able to come in. They're not going to be able to go out without safety issues. Accidents are going to happen on the intersection of Delaware. People walk their dogs. It's, there has to be a better place. If this goes in there, I just, I don't understand. We have a beautiful community of recreation. Come stay, play, come visit. And then we put an asphalt plant right in the middle of everything. There has to be somewhere different. We have a very large footprint here. It, it, there just has to be somewhere different. It's not going to affect the community. I just think the cost versus the benefit is heavily on. Loaded on the cost is too heavy. I mean, it seems to be that. The people of the community are going to pay the cost and then meanwhile, the benefit is going to go. To a business that's going to make even more money. And I, I just really would like your support and I appreciate you hearing my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I will invite, uh, the Hat Creek owner. Uh, I. Something like to come up where it could be spotted. What I'd like to ask. What I'd like to ask, if that way. Other than people who have been invited to leave. Were a pretty. Pretty good group of people, I certainly hear a living here and there's a reason I do it. It's because of the people who live here. This is the guy that made the proposal. And he's certainly heard your words tonight.
Yes, sir.
He has some answers, I think some of the questions uh you asked, I know all the questions you asked are were. Valuable and excellent. And. I think he can square away some of the misinformation that's out there on the net. We've been giving quite a little pie out of the town. Um that gets spun out. But there's also just valid point after valid point here tonight uh from Pat's. Uh Mr. Chris is through each and every person that spoke tonight, so. Um I think he recognizes that and that's what's been given for forgiveness.
Thank you. So uh number one, I wanna say thank you to the council for, you know, giving us this opportunity for everybody to come. Express different opinions, I mean, everybody has their truth. That mic is hot. You can also take it, or you can have a seat, you know, at that chair too. Blow off that wall later. Thank you. My name is Perry Thompson, Perry Thompson, yeah, so. Um first of all, I I just wanna say thank you. I hope everybody can hear me alright. Boy, I I don't enjoy doing things like this. You know, I I understood, I guess. Couple things, uh number one, I wanna say, you know, thank you for this opportunity, let everybody come together, appreciate that. Um secondly, uh for my wife and I, I wanna apologize to the rigs. Very, very sorry. We're not gonna do that, okay, we're gonna be cordial and professional, please. I just want people to understand that uh our businesses, we've been in business for fifty two years. We're a second generation owned company, we're family owned. Uh we take on the glass uh every day, granite constructions, the billion dollar businesses. And we are a small family owned business, small as relative, you know. Um some people think we're a huge company uh compared to granite construction, we're, you know. Yeah, so so uh I I do wanna say, you know, my apologies to the rigs for that because uh. What I, what's hard to sit in here is people that are opposed sometimes will say things. They're absolutely untrue. And we have to sit there and take it and try and take the high road, which we didn't do a very good job in that moment, so apologies for that, so. What I want people to understand, I guess there's a few things. And then I'll take questions as long as you people want to give me questions, as long as the council is okay. So again, I'm Perry Thompson, this is my wife April, we've been married for thirty three years. We have three kids, uh we grew up in small towns, we operate in small towns. Uh and one thing I'll tell you, you don't build the business that's been in business for fifty one years and screw people in small towns. It doesn't happen. It doesn't happen, okay, so. We understand that it's scary to have a project like this proposed. But I want you to know that the reason we chose that site is it's zoned heavy industrial. The only place you can legally put an asphalt plant in this county is in heavy heavy zoned industrial. So I know people said there's lots of other sites, and I would agree, there are sites that, you know, I could argue would be better. But they're not zoned heavy industrial, so that's our first problem as a company, trying to figure out where to go. Um it's the only place you can legally put an asphalt plant, and we're going through the legal process. We're following CECL, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, it's in a very extensive process, and basically um. You know, the a presentation is or a proposal and a permit application is given to the county. And the county ultimately is gonna take all the comments from meetings like tonight and from all the emails and things in writing that. Um the people of Plumas County turn in. All those will be weighed and considered, and then it's gonna be up to them to decide whether the benefit to the project outweighs uh the. Unargued um. The inarguable things that are are not fun to deal with with trucks and doing jobs like this. But here's the thing that I think not many people are recognizing. The project is gonna be awarded, it's a hundred million dollar project, it's gonna be awarded in thirty days. I don't know if we're gonna get it or not. Somebody's gonna get it. Somebody is gonna haul a hundred and eighty thousand tons of asphalt from the beginning of Portola to Promberg. That's happening, no matter what you say, or or how big of a tantrum, you know, we all have about. I don't want it in this location or that location, it's gonna come from somewhere. So the other thing that's a a big misunderstanding, I think, to a lot of people, the hundred and fifty trucks. They they make in a secret process, they make you count. The maximum number of possible truck trips, and they count that as a truck trip, so. If the asphalt, so we have our closest asphalt plant, if we don't put one here is Susanville. So if it comes from Susanville. It will take about sixty trucks to on a per day basis to get the hundred and eighty thousand tons. So you do about two thousand to twenty five hundred tons a day, so from Susanville, we're probably only gonna be able to do. Maybe twelve to fifteen hundred tons a day. If you put it uh here closer, you can do it with ten trucks rather than sixty trucks, and you could probably get twenty five hundred tons a day, so that's. A truck will carry twenty five tons at a time, so that's about a hundred loads a day over a ten hour span, so ten out ten. Uh ten loads every hour, okay, so that's what accounts to two hundred and fifty tons an hour to get to your twenty five hundred tons. So by putting it here, the project will be done quicker, so it will be inconveniencing the public less time. So that's the part of the motivation to do it here, plus it's super hard, trucking is. It's really hard to get sixty trucks, number one. Um and then number two, just trying to be able to do the project faster and get out of the public's hair quicker, okay? So I grew up in Hat Creek, uh Hat Creek flows right by my parents' home. Um we're all about protecting the wild and scenic Fella River. Uh I am not gonna let anything happen to the Fella River on my watch, that's not gonna happen, so. I think a big misunderstanding is, you know, people think of asphalt oil. The gentleman that spoke earlier, I really appreciated his input, but asphalt is inert, asphalt oil is inert, and it's a non hazardous product. It means that um it's stable under ambient temperatures, it turns into a block, so the only time it's in liquid form. Is at around three hundred degrees. So if a tank ruptures, so the asphalt is held in a tank, if it ruptured or if it leaked out of the truck or something happened while they're transferring and it dripped onto the ground. Uh as soon as it starts to cool, it immediately hardens. And you can pick it up and and it's again, it's a non hazardous material, that's why it's all over the streets and roads and all the good people drive on. So I I wanted to kinda get that misnomer out that, you know, we're gonna pollute the world and pollute the Fella River, that's not gonna happen. Uh we're regrading the site, so there's catch basin, so uh even any storm runoff in the area will be caught in the catch basin. Uh before it could be discharged anywhere. The plant is located out of the hundred year floodplain, uh we did surveys to make sure that it's out of the hundred year floodplain. And I think those are some of the main, oh, uh air quality, there's been a lot of discussion about air quality. I have a fifty seven page report that. One of the best air quality firms in the west western US did. Um they took the initial information, our our consultant investor engineering. Hired this firm, ran all the information by um the air district. Uh and granted, she's right, there hasn't been a formal permit, uh we have to get it approved by the county before we can take. Um the project to air quality to get a um authority to construct. So even if the project is approved, it still goes to the air quality district, and then they. Take all the data that we've already run by them and done all the analysis on to make sure uh that we could meet other requirements. Uh but because this asphalt plant is temporary, um it runs. From April would be the earliest, probably more realistically June um to November, probably. Probably the month before that, August, September will probably would be, it it gets too cold to do with asphalt, so it kinda depends on weather. So when the inversion layer is the is the largest challenge uh for. PM two point five and PM tens, an issue here and then Portola. Um at during that time is during the winter when wood stoves are running, the biggest contributor to that is wood stoves, so. Um the best thing this community can do is get rid of wood stoves, uh if they're truly worried about the PM two fives and tens, but. Um the plant would be operating during the summer. And not during the inversion layer, um so. Again, uh I wish we had, you know, a perfect site to put this on, but. Um this is the, this is zoned heavy industrial, uh as far as the intersection, there was some good um. Good commentary about the intersection, I think those are valid concerns. Uh what I do wanna remind people is the project starts. Grizzly Creek area and goes to Promberg, so literally the trucks will be in the construction zone. We would have traffic control in that area, we have a minimum down to probably forty five mile per hour speed limits, we'd have. Signs, we'd have uh lights. Um so it would be a controlled situation, those trucks are going in and out. Uh as far as the railroad crossing, we've proposed right now, and again, it's we're in the permit stage, nothing's been decided at this point, but we propose having a. A permanent flagger there, so someone with a stop bar, like hey, there's a train coming, stopping trucks. Because I agree, one of the biggest risks that we have of having a problem is, you know, trains striking the truck, you know, truck stalls on the. Train some or something like that, so you know, we have proposed to have a flagger there. And then I'm I'm sure there's things I'm forgetting, so. I guess we left the questions rip at this point and uh for something I forgot, so again, I really appreciate everybody's time and uh. I guess the last thing I'm gonna say is, there are some people here, no matter what I say. I could say that we're gonna bring it in in helicopters and and drop it on the road and not impact anybody. Well, helicopters be noisy, I mean, there there's some things that, no matter what we do, people are inconvenienced. People are gonna be dealing with traffic and stops and twenty mile for the next twenty miles for the next three to four years, depending on how long. The project can go, there's gonna be inconveniences associated with the type of work we do, and I'm sorry for that. I haven't figured out a better way to do it. But somebody's gonna do it, there's a good chance it won't be us. Um we're just trying to be ahead, we're very community minded, we're trying to do it the right way. And follow the proper procedures, and I'm telling you, uh most of my peers won't do that, uh but I'm just. You know, I know in this room, I'm not a popular guy, I get that, and uh I appreciate the opportunity to speak here, though, thank you.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, I think, um what I'd like to do is those people ask the question. Um I you've heard the speaker, if you have a question for him. Let's go through the same process we did before, uh respect each other's intelligence. And ask your question, uh directed to, I keep wanting to say Mr. Perry.
Uh Mr. Thompson, Perry is fine, Perry is fine, just call me Perry, that's good.
Um gonna address him. Uh but try, try, and what what happens, I know when I'm asking questions like this, I get emotional, the question gets really dry. So try to focus on on your specific. Uh if you hear the person before you ask the same question you are going to. Make it more narrow, uh try to be more specific.
Yeah, no, I'm just waiting before you start.
He calls me old man, I don't think I know what he says. Um what would you like?
I was making some notes, and I thought maybe I would sum that uh Perry may have missed. And if I could just ask one, and then that regarding water. Oh, oh sure, yeah, great, that was a great question. That that was the only one. Yeah, so at this point, no decision has been made on where we're gonna get water, I'll tell you, Delica Pond has never been discussed. Um you know, that's uh certainly, so. Uh it's it's about um twenty five gallons an hour. Uh excuse me, twenty five gallons a minute, um so to get that in perspective, a garden hose is ten gallons a minute, so. Two and a half garden hoses uh a minute. Uh is similar to the total water usage that we're talking about, it's not a lot of water, it sounds like a lot of water, fifteen thousand gallons a day. Sounds like a lot of water, I get that, a water truck carries four thousand gallons, so five water truckloads. Um and a couple of those are gonna go for dust to pavement, just make sure to keep dust down. And then as far as uh you know, water, trying to put it in perspective, we're talking about twenty five gallons a minute. Um the pivots that are out in Sierra Valley are a thousand gallons a minute, so. Um two hundred and forty thousand gallons a day in a twenty four hour period, so. Um very, very different, um it sounds like a lot, but you know, everything is relative. Uh and we have, you know, one of the things we consider is buy it from one of the utility districts here locally, or. You know, we'll truck it in or whatever needs to happen, because it's not a lot of water. Thank you for the reminder of that.
So you brought up the particulates that I needed you. So in the summer, we have smoke, we have fires, we have smoke, so. We already have people with breathing problems.
Yeah.
And you're saying this is the downtime, but actually it's one of our worst things.
Yeah, yeah, so Perry, you've got a good point, I can't argue with you on the fire part. So our plants are, you know, we have um baghouses, uh the fines are put back through the baghouse. The dust is put back into uh the asphalt, it's come. The technology has come in the last, you know, ten years, twenty years, it's come light years as far as cleaning up. Um there's a reason that, you know, we ran all the numbers by the air quality district and and the plant is compliant, even with. The attainment issues that Portola was having, so you have my word on that, and then here's the thing. I'm not a air quality expert, so we hired an air quality expert, and then ultimately it's gonna be up to the district to make the decision. Um we think that we've done a really good job of analyzing it, and we have the best available control technology on the plant. Uh but ultimately, it's gonna be their decision on on whether or not they agree.
Yeah, so hi Perry, um my name's Dixie Higgins, uh my husband, I have white cap ready mix, which is the. Cement plant that's down on Industrial Road in Delica. And um. I think that there are a lot of um misinformed opinions about what you're trying to do there as far as. Uh particulate matter and emission and all that, because they're heavily regulated. And um they're probably cleaner than what you would imagine they would be. My concern Perry is, again, for the businesses that are located on that street.
Yeah.
We've been there for forty five years, and we, when we're going strong. Put out a truck, maybe five trucks an hour.
Yeah.
And then we also have the import, which you didn't address the import when you talked about.
That's true.
Be ten trucks per hour.
That's true.
So that's one truck every six minutes going out.
Okay.
But for every truck that goes out, there has to be truckloads of materials being imported to make that product. So um and those materials, I'm, don't, I would imagine maybe are coming from Susanville. Anyway, that's where you're located, so the truck traffic. Um issue is huge. There's already a three way T there, where Intermountain. White Cap Ready Mix and Pluma Sanitation all meet as. Coming and going, and it's a, it's not a intersection that is built to spec. It was actually part of Bob and I's property when they decided to put a transfer station down there. So um there is, I'm super concerned about the traffic on that road there. We already come close to having accidents because there are no lights, there are no yields. Um Intermountain backs out into the roadway to get out of their facility. We pull right out to get out of our back plant onto the roadway. Um up at the highway, the trucks pulling onto the highway, there are big lumbering vehicles. And the hatred that happens daily. And the hatred that happens daily as we're pulling out to deliver, it it's a real concern. And so that's where my real concern is, is that. How are you gonna deal with that, and how are you gonna make us deal with it, and. What are you gonna do in the event that the railroad blocks the track crossing? During your um delivery, and. There is another access, and we know about that, and that is not a good option either. It's the undercrossing that goes under the railroad, comes directly around Lance's property. And right in front of my office and down the street, and it's all dirt.
Yeah.
So um it's never been paved, I mean, it needs a lot of attention. Uh or you're gonna make us all suffer so that you can profit, and that is my concern. Other than that, I know that you operate a a nice operation, you know, and you guys do things. In a good way, and I'm sure that you would have uh respect for the local population, but that is a huge problem.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a lot to unpack there Dixie, um so. First of all, thank you uh for that, so yeah, the undercrossing is is plan B, if they did put a, put a. You know, put a train there, which which they can, they haven't done in a long time, but don't.
Uh they they've done it.
Yeah, no, they, yeah, and so we have, we have a a a permit going within uh with the railroad right now. Um and to figure out that whole crossing deal and, you know, whether they're gonna want arms or if the flagger option is gonna work or. Um you know, so so we're in the midst of that process right now, um as far as uh traffic on. You know, again, um that big intersection, it's in the construction zone, so I think we can control that with traffic control. I mean, we could improve it, we're not gonna make it perfect.
So you're gonna control my traffic?
No, 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 I'm talking, yeah, like, I understand, I'm not, I'm talking about the intersection right now, and kind of working backwards. Um at that point, um I don't have. All the answers, what you brought up is a really good concern, I would say probably the what you and I would need to do is spend all the time for you making me understand. This is how it works.
You understand, you've been down.
Yeah, I have. Watching how the traffic goes in and out, I have, I've been in and out, um but I haven't spent probably more than thirty minutes or ever. Um and that's when I stopped to talk to you several years ago, um so, um. You know, those are my questions, and it's something that we're gonna need to address, uh again, this is the only heavy industrial zone property.
Uh so can I ask you at what point it became heavy industrial across the track? Has it was zone light industrial M one property on the north side of the track? And um I'm not sure at what point, I think maybe it's been that way all along, heavy industrial.
I think so.
Cause of the railroad is why that was designated that way.
There was kind of a um sand and gravel operation there, they screened out the gravel.
He wasn't there first, he he came in with the little screening plant.
Okay.
So.
I don't know, I don't know when it is, I just know it's the proper zoning, which is why the property was chosen.
It's what you need for the asphalt plant, and is there no other M one anywhere around here?
None that were for sale that we could get.
What about renting or leasing?
We put out some feelers and tried to do that, didn't get any positive results, um it doesn't mean that it's completely off the table, but again. Heavy industrial, this is where we've spent the time, I'm I'm not opposed to moving if we could still. Beat the timelines of the project, but again, the project is gonna be awarded in thirty days, this is a very lengthy process, we've already been. Six, seven months into the process at this point, um and it's just, you know, we're betting. We may or may not get it, we may have spent all this money for no reason, we don't get the job, and. You know, everybody cheers, um that's that's a high possibility right now, that that happens.
Would you consider um going forward with it to supply uh the load better?
Um probably not, probably not.
Thank you, thanks Perry, I appreciate it.
Yeah, just piggyback on on Dixie's uh concern, just the infrastructure of like the road itself. Um like she says, there that that curve right there goes right by the 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 gas station. That road's terrible, you know, uh it it, do you guys have plans? To improve that road, widen it, make it make it more travelable and and, I mean, you're an asshole, you know.
Yeah.
Move, you should kind of do something to that road to make it.
Yeah, so what's proposed right now is is a loop of paving to when they come off the railroad tracks and go around the plant to minimize. To minimize dust, so to pave that section, and then to pave any pop holes and bad areas and narrow areas. On the on the entrance road, the Delacropon just rode from Highway seven, that's what's proposed right.
It seems like that, if that road is, that entire road widened, somebody said roundabout. Um it seems like a lot of those concerns could be alleviated, that was like much wider, it could handle more mains. In uh getting out of there, so, that's that's.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm Mike Turner, I agree, I have a question, uh I don't know much of your book, but I heard a comment earlier. Even though, like, but smell.
Yeah.
Would that be, would that be a large smell or are you gonna cut out a lot of it?
So we operate our Ward Lake facility over by Susanville, um there are homes that are closer than than what we have. Here, um. I found a way, we haven't had a single complaint in five years uh about smell or. Um anything to do with the asphalt plant, so. Um the plants have come a long ways, they're they used to be kind of sit blowing, you know, pretty ugly things to watch. But now a lot of people, what they think is smoke, it's steam, cause it's burning off, you know, the aggregates are wet, you know, so. Um when the burner is running, it's burning off water, um so what you see in the morning is steam, uh the plants are remarkably clean. Uh you know, but again, are they are they perfect now, um but. You know, if if we don't figure out how to pave roads, we're gonna be driving in the mud. And when we drive, we're gonna be in four liter drive vehicles, not getting anywhere in the winter, so. Right now, it's the best, it's the best thing out there, asphalt is the best thing out there, it's at least expensive and. And the most environmentally friendly overall, um we all use the roads, so. You know, until they figure out something better, it's kind of what we're doing, but they've come a long ways with the technology and keeping the the plant operation as clean as possible.
I have a question for you, this, if you, particulate matter is concentrated in too great. It sells, you have plans to shut down, will you be forced to shut down your plant for a day or?
Yeah, so that's that's an air quality thing, um I would love to sit here and tell you, I'm not smart enough to do air quality, you know, system, and those are really smart people that do that stuff. Uh so, um that's why I hire consultants that are, you know, the best in the industry, uh and they're telling me that it it not only. Um that right now it doesn't uh do anything negative to the goals of the district at this point, and and would be approved if. The current numbers hold true and it was a uh the application was made today.
Um I imagine there's testing stations in different areas.
There are, the the district has testing stations, and then, I I don't, I don't know all things, like, I'm not, I shouldn't even talk about that, because I don't know all that they do, but they do a lot.
I don't know all of you, I, you're all residents, women, so I follow you, I'm in your hopes, but the air district. The business cards are up there, but there are a lot of independent people, I'm employed by the grant, I could not have a degree in atmospheric science. Just like get off the eye contact, so it's just.
Well, if particulate matter does, does bad for you is point one, it's really bad. And you're into the lung tissue.
Yeah, I. Because air quality was such a hot button, while I was following these comments for the last week or so, um. I I just gotta read one statement from the local air quality, a a representative of the local air quality, uh this type of facility is considered a minor source. And will have no significant impact on the PM two point five levels in the local area, that's straight from the local air quality, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, next question, yes, sir.
Yeah, Ron Campbell, the railroad guy again, I had no idea all those trucks were actually gonna be going over any railroad crossing. Um having been in my care of wrecks over the years, including out of New York and Nevada, where six of them, a truck ran into side of my train and killed the conductor. Killed the truck driver and the passengers. Four years ago, at the Derby Dam, they were doing a big construction site there, and our train. Running westbound, and once again, I wasn't the engineer at that time, I think it was a fellow who was here in Portola, ran into that truck, it was a cement truck. So the concerns are very, very real, and of course, we just saw the crazy experience of East Palestine, Ohio. When a train derailed and up that town and and, but that's off the subject.
Yeah.
My point is, uh the question I want to ask you is, you had said you would put in a request for a flagger. And so my concern is, a request to who, and if the flagger wasn't provided, then what?
So I I, Ron, I, uh we deal with the railroad a lot in in projects that are near the railroad, um. They have, as you know, pretty extensive requirements, it's almost like its own bureaucracy that you need to kind of get through.
Hmm.
So, we have, in our application to them, we've got two things, one would be a flagger. You know, because we're concerned about it, we don't, we don't wanna just trust the truck drivers who were maybe distracted and not paying attention with no. So that, we had to need flagger, a flagger there or some sort of stop, you know, controlled system to pay trains coming stop, you know. So all I meant was in our application to them, so we had to pay a twenty-five thousand dollar fee to start the process to see if the railroad. What they're going to require for us to cross, that's what I meant by the application, so that application is pending, that's. Following a separate course uh that that we're following here through the sequel process, um that's all I meant is.
So there would be a flagger.
Yeah, at a minimum, uh even if they don't require it, I will have a phone there, because that's my worst nightmare, if something like that happened, so, not on my watch. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Um you've stated that this is a temporary plant, but you bought the property.
Yeah.
So what is your, what are your long-term objectives with that piece of property, once you complete the project?
Great question, um so we bought the property um. Back when we heard about this project, when it was, it was um programmed by Caltrans, maybe, I don't have an exact time, I'm gonna say five years ago. Um so just to be able to have, um again, we looked around for, you know, heavy industrial zone property, and that was the only one available at that time. And so we bought it for this project, so once this project is done, an asphalt plant not. Sighted at a quarry is a pretty inefficient operation, this makes it efficient because it's right in the middle of the job. But to say, haul rock into it and then make it here and then go to Truckee, for example, makes no sense. There's an asphalt plant in Truckee, an asphalt plant in Reno, so. Um the reason we made this a temporary permit is because it was for, there's this project and one more large project going that way that will come out next year. Um it's a one-year project, uh and so either those trucks are gonna be sitting through that traffic control. Coming to this, uh cause this is a three or four year job, or um anyway, I'm getting off track on why. Uh we bought for this for this project, and then we're either gonna sell it or keep it, because you just never know, I mean, industrial properties are valuable to hold as an asset.
So the possibility of continued operations.
No, that is not a possibility, in fact, in the in our permit application, it's it is temporary for the pro- the Highway seventy projects. So when those projects are done, the the plant will go away, and I, right here in front of you guys, I'll say, and so. Uh the maximum amount of times, it's a very difficult project, or very, very challenging project, some massive. Uh underground, big box holder, super complicated job, it's gonna be a minimum of three years, probably three and a half. Years to get the job done, um so once that project is over, our plan is to take the plant, because it doesn't make sense, there's not enough. Asphalt in the Portola area to just have a have a plant sitting here without large jobs.
Next question.
Yes, sir, so is there a mechanism with accounting to lock that in?
So that. Yeah, that is, that could be a, in fact, I'm sure what, you know, um the county will do is make that a condition of the use permit. Is that there's a timeframe associated with it, I'm sure, even our, even our thirty-year permits have a thirty-year timeframe, so we've. Applied for this as a temporary permit, so that will be a condition in the use permit.
Now you mentioned another project going in a different direction.
Yeah.
You're coming out of this plant too.
Possibly, yes.
But that doesn't extend.
It wouldn't extend it, it would just be happening at the during the same period, three and a half year period.
I I think you may have asked, but have you ever built something like this before, I haven't fifty years, but is it somewhere where, like. They wanted to drive by and leave with this thing, what's like?
Yeah, we've got three asphalt plants.
Where are those at?
So one is uh what we call Ward Lake Facility, which is in Litchfield, just outside of Susanville. Um we have one up above Big Valley near Lookout called our Shaw Pit, S H A W. Um and then we have a a smaller plant in Alturas, uh at our Fitch Road Facility. Um so all three of those are available to people, stop by and take a look.
Those were, but those weren't built as temporary, those were.
Those, yeah, those are permanent thirty-year permit, um type of uh of permanent operations.
Located in any kind of, um near West twenty-two mile radius.
Yeah, so so Ward Lake probably has the closest residences, um probably thousand feet. Um was the closest residences, um trying to think, um Shaw Pit. There's some ranch homes within a thousand feet, uh but not any heavy population centers, and then. Our Fitch Road Facility in Alturas probably is half a mile from, well, there's a couple residences closer than that from a thousand feet. But most of the population density is a half a mile.
So the guy, so now that you're done with that job, you want me to keep going, go all the way to Quincy, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, so this, again, this is applied as a temporary permit, so they will put a timeframe on this, because it's not a permanent.
I was saying, what if they say, okay, now you're done, here's another hundred million bucks, keep going.
Yeah, uh.
What's gonna happen?
Then I, then I have to go through this process again, because that time would expire, and I have to go through this process again.
Okay, yeah, next question. Yes, ma'am.
Can we determine length of time, that it will be open and thing?
So we've been very clear that we need it for the duration of this project, uh so. This project has working days associated with it, uh a schedule required by it. Um there can be extensions beyond the contractor's control, for example, uh our high, our. Large project, our Good Fred project that we're doing between Susanville and Westwood was impacted by the Dixie Fire and shut down for half a summer. Uh that extended the project another half a season, so things, um I would argue that things beyond my control, you know. Uh that extend the project, uh but again, if it was stopped by a fire, for example, there would be no activity coming out of the oper- out of the operation. So the net effect timeframe uh that would be impacting the citizens wouldn't change, if that makes sense, it might be. Longer, but the impacts would stay the same, relatively speaking.
You said you have a plant in Litchfield, the population is what, two hundred?
Yeah.
It's a desert, there's no recreation activities around there like there is in this area.
Yeah.
Going from, you know, where they're planning, Grizzly to Promberg.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
There's gold lakes, there's all kinds of activities, you can ride the street, this highway all the time.
Yeah, so.
You compare that to this, you can't, the population there is what, two hundred maybe, if that.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's two hundred.
Yeah, we're within seven miles of Susanville, Susanville's twenty thousand people, I bet Litchfield is, wow. Five, six hundred people, I mean, you're right, it's not, it's not Portola, I I I would agree with you.
But there's no recreational activity, like, it's really, people driving all the time, you go up to the lakes.
Yeah, but man, a hundred eighty thousand tons of pavement is gonna happen, whether it's there or if it's coming, I mean, I I I know that's unfortunate. No, you can do the sixty trucks instead of ten trucks, I mean, that's that's really what we're talking about here, um and Dixie had a good point. But the the thing that we're gonna be able to do was we'll be able to haul our trucks, instead of sixty trucks hauling in the eggs to be prepared for it, we'll be able to do it year-round. And have fifteen trucks on. Well, I understand, you've got a good point, it won't be year-round, it would, it won't be during a three-month go time like, it's paid this. Three or four months of going really hard, and it's really hard to secure sixty trucks to do that effectively, so. By bringing it in and kind of getting your materials closer and then doing it quicker, you can make the project go quicker and get out of your hair sooner.
That's not with ten trucks, we've got.
That's starting with ten trucks. We've got bring Tiger in, in.
Yeah, that, that's what I was. No, I just, I just, back Dixie brought up that point. It's a great point. We're just trying to talk about. Instead of doing it during three months, sir, we're talking about maybe doing it over seven, eight, nine months, so it's not as impactful. And that's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Is there an asphalt plant in Reno? Is there one by the DSR?
There's a three asphalt plants in Reno. Um, Tiker has one, Granite has one. And Sierra Nevada Construction will.
Are they similar to what you're putting?
They're much larger, they're largely much larger, yes. Yeah, they're probably five hundred ton an hour plants. And what we're proposing here is, um, you know, the math we're doing is twenty-five hundred tons a day. It's about a three hundred ton an hour plant.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so we all understand the need for fixing our roads, um, you know. Um, but this is just not the right site. I think we all agree with that. Um, you mentioned that it admits steam, let's say, another worker's room of vapors. And it's gonna be very toxic vapors and a simple internet search can give you a whole list of the toxic vapors that are emitted from these plants. Sure, you may not see them. It may look like steam, but it's not. Um, you know, whatever the numbers say, yes, there are people in this room. Who, no matter what you say, we're not going to side with you. And that's because we're smart and we care about our communities. Um, it just doesn't belong in a residential area. You and I, we've all, we've done this before, we've been down this road before, you know? This is just the tip of the iceberg of the opposition that you're facing. Um, I, I am really grateful that you're here. Um, it's, you know, I respect you and whatnot, but it's, I don't respect you trying to put an asphalt plant on our burger in our community. Making us skip dinner and go through this emotional experience. Um, so I just wanna, my question is, when are you ready to sell the property? And so I'm gonna help you consider selling it to us, all of us. We'll maybe be, you know, some funny person buying on you and present it, so.
Thank you, I.
No questions.
Can I ask a question? Harry, what's your hours of operation going to be?
Um, I think in the permit, we, or the permit application, we're asking Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. Uh, and then actual asphalt being shipped for about ten hours, but it takes some time to get the plant building.
So the weekend will not be, uh.
So let's, let's talk about that. So, um, right now, we've built a schedule, we're bidding the project. This project to be, to get it in the number of days that Caltrans wants. Um, right now, we've got, our bid has pipe crews working twenty-four hours a day, uh, five days a week. Um, it's, it's very, very challenging. So if there's some delays, then yeah, some Saturdays will have to be taken to get caught up. Right now, we're bidding around five days a week because it's very expensive for us to do overtime and we, we're, all these wages are prevailing wages, so it goes to. One point five times those wages on Saturdays. We avoid Saturdays. Um, I know that's another good thing that, uh. Nighttime operations, so sometimes Caltrans requires nighttime. We hate working at night. We don't like working at night. It's, it's less safe. It's harder on our family, you know, on our employees' families. Uh, but sometimes it's contractually required. Uh, for example, we did the downtown Susanville project that was required to be done at night. So, um, at this point, I don't anticipate any night, but there may be some contract requirements that would require some nights. But I don't see it right now, but I'm not gonna say never.
Can you explain to the people here what the pipe, um, it would be twenty-four hours a day, the, the pipe operations would entail?
Yeah, so there, I can't remember the exact, I mean, there's. I'm gonna s- guesstimate twenty thousand linear feet of pipe that has to go in across this road and, and twenty miles. Um, and so, uh, and then Caltrans also has these requirements that you have to do it in phases. In other words, they won't let us just shut down twenty miles of road, which we could probably do the project in a year and a half if we could do that, but that would be. Horribly impactful to the, to the traveling public. So they, they have maximum closures that you can do that, you know, are around three miles. And so when you're trying to, we can't have twenty pipe crews putting them in at once because we can't shut the road down. So to work within those three-mile zones that Caltrans gives us, in order to meet the timelines of the contract. We have to work twenty-four hours a day with the pipe crews, with light towers and, and impacting traffic twenty-four hours a day. Because it's the only way the project will get done. And it's also when the least amount of cars are being impacted is at night, but it's still a pain for everybody.
So the pipe operations isn't gonna have anything to do with the asphalt?
No, not that, we don't see, asphalt is not the critical path on the schedule right now. It's the underground utilities, uh, that are the critical path.
Nighttime ma- my operation might actually be better. Because it would be less impactful to.
Yeah.
The neighbors, the businesses, the roadway, the traffic.
Yep. You're gonna deliver concrete to me at night?
Right early in the morning, of course, and, you know, um, and we have a short season here. Everybody on that street has a short season.
Yeah.
So not just you guys, your production will be from, when you said, June through October.
Yeah.
That's when we're running at our highest too. Because, as we all know, we spent five months in the snow this year, so.
In one week.
Yeah, one more question.
Your time for highlights, sir, about your attitude towards us. Giving your wife's negative comment back here was very hurtful. And referring to our concerns of tantrum. That's not, that's a bad thing. If you think about how we feel about we live as a tantrum, that's a bad way to look at it. I mean, I know you're in a business, you're trying to make money, but that's not a good way to look at it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I should use word.
Well, it's even worse what she said back here.
Yeah. It, it's hard, it's hard to do what we're doing right now. It's hard.
It is, but it's really, but when you come to somebody and you say something so negative to them, that's really bad for them.
Ma'am, I, I, I have apologized multiple times and I'll apologize again. Uh, we, we are.
It shows where you actually feel about the whole thing. You say a lot of good things here.
Well.
But that makes me very nervous about how you actually feel, how we feel about it.
Ma'am, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to be respectful. It's hard, it's hard for me to be in, in the hot seat. It is, it's not easy. Um, and I, and I hope you can appreciate that. And I, I know, I always look back on things like this and go, I could have done better. Um, so. I'll take your, uh, your constructive criticism under advisement. I'm trying to be better, okay?
This lady right here, the owner.
Thank you. Um, so kind of wanted to comment on that too, but, um, it was hard to perceive you as nerdy minded as you described yourself. Maybe you use things like that. That's also, I can't understand that. Um, that aside, I did, I don't know if you heard me earlier, I did have some concerns about. You know, health and, and for the people there that is living close to this asphalt plant. And, um, I'm trying to seek aggressive resources, but resources, do you have any resources that we can read up on as a public about? And I mean, like peer-reviewed scholarly articles that we can refer to.
I have the fifty-seven page air quality analysis, uh, that, that has been turned into the county already. Part of the secret documents that are public record. I have a copy of that. You're welcome to take it tonight if you'd like it.
Okay. And does that address the specific concerns that I mentioned?
Yeah, yeah, well, so again, I'm not a air quality expert, okay? I'm not. Um, so. Uh, that's why we hire that. That's why there's the Air Quality District that reviews the project and reviews the admissions. And again, they're a lot smarter than I am, so I don't try and pretend to tell you, you know, um. I just know that we employ a hundred and sixty-five people and, uh, we're around asphalt all the time and. I, I care about our people. I care, my kids work in the company. I've worked in the company. Um, my wife works in the company. I work in the company. We're around it all the time. Um, you know, uh, I worked at Tiker Construction before coming here. That was, uh, it's a hundred and twenty-five-year-old company that's been doing asphalt. Um, I. Is, is it, uh, um, I, I think it's a very safe industry. I know, I know there's a lot of emotions of. About like anything, if you drink, you know, seven thousand cans of Diet Pepsi is, you know, that's gonna do some really bad things to you. But in moderation, uh, I don't think that there's anything unsafe about what we do. And I really believe that, really do.
Have you guys talked to the hospitals? Something Leah could possibly answer to. Have you guys talked to the hospital? This is gonna be in the middle of tourist season. It's gonna double the traffic. There's gonna be one lane. The ambulance in Portola responds from. Grizzly Road or by the airport all the way down to Cromberg.
Yep.
What are you guys gonna do for a second ambulance or a second crew? The second crew for Eastern Plumas Healthcare comes from Loyalty Air. If they're both busy, they call an ambulance to stage at the top of the summit. The other question is, have you talked to the local fire agencies? Because there is a fire department that only has three volunteers. They don't have paid firefighters up here.
Yeah. Okay, so one more time here. So your first question, the ambulance, so, um. Again, we don't have the contract. Uh, somebody is gonna get it. I'm, I'm hoping it's us. Don't know if it will be us. That will be decided in about thirty days. Um, I can't tell you that what we do, I don't know what other contractors do. Whenever emergency personnel are, you know. Um, our traffic control is stopped and we immediately let it through. Um, they get priority over anything else that's happening, over the construction, over what the pilot car is doing. Pilot car stops. Everybody's in communication and then the ambulance is left here. But that's how we deal with it. Um, I can't tell you how other contractors are gonna deal with it. Your second, what was your second question? I'm sorry.
Regards fires.
Oh, uh, fire, fire services. So, um, you know, asphalt plants, uh. Fifty-two years, we've never had a fire, uh, at an asphalt plant or any of our quarries, um. Uh, I'm not gonna say that it's impossible, uh, but we have water trucks on site. We have all fire extinguishers and every single, we have ten-pound fire extinguishers. Uh, we've got foam suppression systems. Um, we haven't had any problem like that, but again, you know. Uh, hope we don't, but asphalt plants by nature don't really catch on fire. They don't.
What size propane tank are you guys gonna?
Uh, it'll be a, it'll be probably a fifteen thousand gallon propane tank. Yeah. Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Once again, I want to remind the public. That your comments need to go to this county before June tenth. Uh, that's here in the comment period. Um, good questions, very specific, I think. I think Perry appeals the specificity of them, uh, tonight. Um, but. Do your public duty and, and the county needs to know. Um. Thank you for, for coming and being so respectful. We know there were a couple of bad moments. And our sergeant, Karen.
I apologize for my son and his actions. It was a rude comment made over here and he's very protective. Um, anyways, I apologize for that.
You don't have to get him out of jail. Thank you all for coming. And, uh.
Matt, real quick, hey, you think we get some discounted, uh, asphalt for the city?
Actually, that's, that was a North Carolina episode, but I had a question. On that topic. Of course. Sure, I think the meeting's still running here. On, on, on that topic, if, if this all goes through, you have the contract and you're, and you're batching asphalt there, um.
Yeah.
I know I've asked you this before, but I want to make this a matter of public record.
Sure.
Will the city be able to buy asphalt from you as well? Um, and, and the, the reason that that benefits the city, in fact, I know asphalt, not like you or many people. But I know that most of the asphalt in all of Plumas County is of lesser quality. Than asphalt in areas where the proximity to the asphalt plant is closer and the temperature remains warmer. Um, it would be nice to have warm asphalt ten minutes away that we don't have to pay. Hundreds and hundreds of dollars just to get it here. So wondering if, if that is available without messing up extra traffic or, I mean, we. We don't have enough money to do a lot anyway, but there's, there's, we've got a couple of hundred grand worth of, worth of pothole aim and items to work on. And the material would be better from you than what we make. Yeah. So, so that's, I'm glad to wrap it up because the, the plant would sit here for approximately three years. But it would operate, you know, at two thousand tons a day, which, you know, this close, we could probably do twenty-five hundred tons a day. But the two thousand tons a day, we're talking about ninety days over three years. So thirty days a year. Plant's gonna operate, okay? So during those times that it's not operational, meaning dedicated to the Highway seventy project. Would be a great time to be able to sell without affecting the schedule of the large project. And to have hot asphalt available to state, city and, and local community. And then also contractors in the area. That was something that we are hoping will happen. That, that is a benefit, obviously. And this one more thing, and a step outside my role as the city manager, and a step outside my role of. Any previous policymaking or anything. And the one thing that I think that was brought up today, that is the one thing that I was really concerned with. And it still am legitimate concern that the rigs had regarding the traffic at the intersection of Delacre and Seventy. It is the, um. Some of the other, I would say, hyperbolic claims regarding the impact on the environment that are pretty common from some of the groups. Um, I've, I, I checked those. I checked my box after research. But that's one thing that I really think some effort needs to go into, if you end up having it. To, to figure out how to slow that traffic down or co- control that Delacre Seventy because. When my kids started getting their driver's licenses here, I didn't even want them driving there. So that's. As a, as a person not sitting in this position, that's, that would be a concern that I would be really concerned with, yeah. Agreed.
I'd like to go down the channels. I don't know, uh, questions for Mr. Johnson?
Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for building the house. Uh, finally, I haven't seen, I haven't seen this build since I've been on. Also want to thank Perry too for coming. Um, I, I think it was an opportunity, a great opportunity that you're both signed. And I think you gave a lot of therapy too, so thank you for that.
Well, it's been a long night. I really appreciate the fact that you came and answered all these questions. There are a lot of, that I see. Floating around, you know, that. There's the Promes and I've seen Hack Creek Construction. Their main office is not far from Burnley Falls. And they do an excellent job there. If anybody's ever in that area, take a look up there. Um. The issue with the Wild Snake River, I proposed, uh, a few years ago. And when we did the river water, um, a. To redo a park off of, uh, Rocky Point Road for RVs. I think it had fifteen spots in the eighties. And nineties. And, uh, right away, it's where a service jumped up and next that project because of the Wild City River. I'm kind of wondering where the force services now. Um, I understand the issue with there being heavy industrial property. Probably should never have been zoned down there that way. So it is, and. Uh, but there is part of me that just doesn't follow.
I asked my point. So, um, I, my other concern was the truck traffic. But we're gonna have truck traffic, whether it comes from Susanville or whether it comes from Delacre. Uh, we're still gonna have diesel exhausts. We're still gonna have fumes. And, um. I'm glad that the hundred and fifty trucks a day was mixed because I couldn't imagine having a hundred and fifty trucks a day. Running up and down, um, Highway Seventy.
Yeah, to be clear, there's talking about truck trips, but it gets interpreted.
Correct.
As trucks, which is understandable. It's kind of confusing. Um, but, uh, that is. That's really not obtain- obtainable. Um, it's more like a hundred was just kind of what we talked about. But anyway, just I wanted to clarify. That's where the confusion came from.
Well, I'd like to thank Perry for coming and, uh, explaining the facts and everything and people in the audience.
Explaining the facts and everything, and people in the audience for coming and sharing their concerns. And stopping. Rumors, there's so many rumors running around, and people need the actual facts of what's gonna happen. And I. Think there are still some. Concerns, like with the railroad and the traffic on Delacre Road, and. I don't know if that can be mitigated or.
They need to, they need to be sent to the county, you know, those, those are legitimate concerns, you know, and it's the county's job to try and mitigate those concerns, yeah. Which I know, I mean, that's.
So I thank everybody for coming, and it's been very informational.
And I, I have got a comment or two, but I first wanted to apologize to the audience. Um, I also sit on the transportation division. And Ray proposed this project. And put full color pictures of the whole thing, it is a monster of a project. Uh, they are widening, they are putting in bike lanes, widening the entire, um. Corridor, putting in new culverts, putting in, uh, reducing the curves. Taking the loop-de-loops out from the front of Shawnee View, uh, lessening them. Uh, so you'll have some, uh, better view. And I had, I had copies of that, and I could have supplied copies tonight. And let you see the enormity of this thing, um, and that's just kind of sidebar to, uh. If I, um, I know that everybody here. That's elected and appointed or hired, uh, believes. That this is the only way to have a conversation. Um. I was sick to death of Zoom for three years, pretty sick of it. Um, and Facebook and. Other electronic devices are great for communicating stuff. But this stuff always gets retorted, it's like the old. Telephone, you know, whisper in the next person's ear. Tonight I opened it up, it lay there, I don't think there's anything that I have, I fell back. From, uh, something I wanted to say, and I think, um, the owner, uh. Got an earful and appreciated, I appreciate him being here and having the. Uh, fortitude to, uh, come here, I wish every project he attempted. Had the contractors sit here and and knock it around a little bit, that would help. But do, again, I I just want to tell you again and again. Call the planning department, rent the co- the planning department, get your. Get your opinions in there, that's the only thing that will count. We can do it, and as was, you know, the city council says this or that. It means no more than each of your individual voices.
Probably.
One thing we each worry when we got elected was, well, you used to be a voice. Now you're a one-fifth of the voice. And that's our, I guess, we've gotta agree, at least three of us have to agree on every decision we make. When you're at home, you only have to agree with yourself, finding a car, you have to have a toilet, that's better than yours. But thank you all again, and I'd like to adjourn.
A little quick, could you just cut this off real quick on how we. It has the same information as the, the actual notice. Unedited is sitting right there on the corner from the county.
Okay.
It has the exact, yeah.
You can send it by email or. Great, thank you, did you adjourn?